This is a recording of the Southwick Public Library Board of Trustees. It is March eleventh at seven oh two PM.
Well, sorry, public comments. I don't see any members of the public here unless they're on Zoom.
Nope, just Tracy, but we'll do a roll call too while we're forget. So Lynn Blair.
Michael McMahon.
Cindy Warner.
Tammy Sagbasan.
Okay, we'll move on to communications.
And Tracy's volume is off, but Tracy Meswar is on Zoom. Okay, I forgot to print out a copy of the department head report, so I will just read it off my phone. So in February, we circulated five thousand forty-nine physical items. This is up seven point two four percent from February twenty twenty-four. We had ten adult programs with seventy-five attending, three kids programs with fifty-five attending, five general audience with one hundred and eighteen attending, and fourteen programs with thirty-two attending. The Friends of the Library hosted a National Read to Your Child Day on February fifteenth, which was very well attended. They said about fifty participants. And for the reporting, we just had Jennifer Beldon and Andrea Bubbi join us. We are beginning to work towards our master plan action items as requested by the committee. One thing our reference department is working on is looking at the library collection and the resources to see what we do have on Native Americans and history in the area. There's actually not much. Paul has been working with me to kind of see if there's any resources that there's recommended that we have. And even the experts say that there's just not a lot out there. So we have added some resources and we've made a list. If anybody's coming in interested, eventually when I have time, it'll end up on our website on like the genealogy local history page, but that'll happen when it happens. And then we're also developing programs that we can offer to the public on Native Americans in our area in New England. I have one booked. I believe it is in October, so there is something coming up. John did a survey for the Young Adult Department for teens. Mainly teens are requesting more elaborate craft programs. They enjoy the gaming career and craft offerings, but they would like more. Suggestions for teen programs were more career programs, and they wanted to do movie nights. We are doing a plant, seed, and supplies swap cosponsored with the Agriculture Commission, May third. May first and second will be drop-off days, and then we'll have a brief period for a drop-off before it actually starts on Saturday in case people are working and can't get here Thursday, Friday. So if you guys are plant enthusiasts and have anything to plant, tribings, anything that you want to donate, we would welcome them. Upcoming special programs tomorrow night, we're having Lee Hamburg here to discuss discovering the history of your home. Two gardening roundtables. We just had one last night with nineteen people that came. Yeah, it was surprised. Fantastic. And then the Western Mass Food Bank is doing two sessions in May. We're going to have a presentation on kind of the history of the Quabbin, but also, you know, things you can do nowadays like hiking and exploring. A local author is going to talk about the Westfield River. The Board of Health is doing a tick prevention program, and she is doing another Stop the Bleed training, which has been very popular. We are finalizing our summer reading program calendar leading up to the kickoff, which will be Saturday, June twenty-first, one week earlier, so we don't conflict with motocross. I think they officially confirmed that they are following weekends, so it was a good idea that we moved it up. And then when I sent this to you all, everybody saw the attached documents that we presented to the finance committee at their meeting, which I think went well. They got some good questions, so.
Anything for the January or February meeting minutes?
Motion to accept the minutes.
All those who favor Michael, yes.
Jen, yes.
Andrea, yes.
Cindy, yes.
Tammy, yes.
Tracy, yes.
So these are our February numbers. Increase in circulation. Big increase in reference, actually exactly the same number of cards as February twenty twenty-four. A little up in computer usage, and then the the Libby numbers I'll have to get back to you next month. Every time I tried to run the report, I got an error message. They must were having some type of issue on their their reporting system, so that's why there's those stars there, but. And then if you'll notice that the deposits were quite large, we had one thousand one hundred and fifteen dollars in donations.
That's awesome.
Yeah, somebody gave, there were two donations in memory of, I believe the name is pronounced NATO, Helen NATO. There were two donations in her memory. One of them was a thousand dollars to be used for children's programs, anything like that. I think I think I spoke with her son. I think he said that she was involved at the elementary school, and so he said that, you know, it would be nice to see it go to children's stuff. So when Molly gets back from her leave, I have a note to talk with her and see, you know, I'm sure she has some good ideas for what she'd like to see it for.
Did anybody do anything nice for her, for her baby?
Absolutely. Yeah, yeah, yeah. Yep, she's been, she was, she got a lot of gifts before she left. And then I threw her a little party with the staff with lots of snacks and stuff, so, yeah, she's expected back at least. I'm okay.
Well, feeling feeling that spot was.
Oh, yeah, yeah, definitely. Yeah, we we can tell whenever whenever somebody's gone, we really feel, you know, the loss. But, yeah, I think we're, we're doing okay. Any questions about program numbers, anything on here? Seems like February, it's like being a shorter month was pretty busy. And then for old business, I determined that with everything going on, you know, with with somebody being out with John doing his teen survey, it would just be too much to try to do our annual survey that we usually try to do in April, probably aim for next year. People are surveyed out. I think every other year is probably a best bet for us because it takes time to put things into action. So if, you know, we do it year after year, you know, it doesn't give us a lot of time to actually.
You did not do that improvement.
Yeah, yeah, it gives us more time to actually things into action. And then I was aiming to at the end of February, obviously we're short-staffed, I didn't get to it. So I'm aiming for the end of March, our hoopla numbers for March or for February. I think it was about four hundred and fifty-four dollars for the month, so it's still pretty high. So I think at the end of this month, I'm going to carve out some time and just lower the number of checkouts to about seven to eight per month. I think I'm going to try for seven because as more people are discovering it, you know, for those of you who haven't used it, it is a pay-per-use service, so every checkout costs money. So.
I apologize for using it so much.
There's, yeah, there's no problem with using it so much. It's just that, you know, more people are using it. So as we have more people using it, the bill was was like over five hundred dollars one month. So we just want to make sure that, you know, it's one of those things that's kind of hard to control. You know what I mean? Unless you put a cap on it, because we have twelve checkouts, which when I was asking other libraries is actually extremely high. Some libraries are as low as like two to three checkouts.
So. You know, just knowing that it costs the library money because you're not going to like this. I will sometimes look on hoopla like, oh, that sounds interesting. I'll put it in my basket, like I'll borrow it and then keep going through the list. Like, I didn't know that counted as like that was costing the library money. And then once I have three or four things borrowed, I then choose the one I'm actually going to read.
Yep.
So I think if I knew, if anyone knew, oh, it's a limited amount, you know, they won't do that.
And the, when I look back at the 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 circulations, the number of people that were borrowing twelve items per month is a very, very small percentage of the actual users using it. So I think it's it's going to affect probably the least amount of users. Most users average maybe like two to three a month. So again, I don't think it's gonna bother a lot of people, but it would be nice to lower it because it is using a fairly large, obscenely large, but large enough portion of the budget this year that, you know, it's a great service. We want to keep it. We want to keep people happy, and I'm glad they're enjoying it. But also just kind of keep it in check because if it does keep growing and people keep discovering it, telling their friends, then, you know, even if we do decrease the usage and more people are using it, then that kind of just cancels itself out. So.
Some of the resources that are on there, could they get that from the electronic Boston Public Library, which is another source?
Potentially, yeah. Yeah, the the nice thing about hoopla is there's no weights, and people really like that. Some of the stuff through like Libby or other other sources, you have to wait a while to actually get what you want. So I'm aiming that for the end of this month. And what we'll have, I'll copy one of their libraries have done some nice, clear, concise messages. I think when you reason it out that it is a pay-per-use service, you know, and by decreasing the amount of borrowers, we can make it accessible to more people. I think that would make sense for most people.
And something in related area, and I don't know the details, apparently the state of Connecticut, say legislature is looking at some kind of state law that would reduce the cost of libraries getting electronic books, how they're going to do it or.
Massachusetts is doing that as well. It's been bouncing around for a while now. I currently don't know the status of it, but yeah, so would be, but who knows? So that's that's planned for for the end of March. And then we'll see. I will, we'll put it on all of our social media, website, whatnot, and, you know, we'll tackle any questions as they come. Okay, new business. I sent everybody a copy of the, it was super long, so I didn't print it out for everyone. But I sent everybody a copy of the material selection policy. There is only one change that I would like to request that we make in page. Technically, it's the third page of the document. It still says on here that you have to be a resident of Southwick to borrow from the Library of Things. We changed that months ago, so we just have to edit that. I did go through and read through it again, and I sent it to everybody to just have people take a look. I still think it's very sound. I don't see anything that's worth changing. Obviously, this is a policy that we want to revisit on the regular. So the last time we looked at it was May twenty twenty-three, so it's almost been two years. So I still think that it holds up well. I don't see anything that I would recommend that we change or update. I think it's it's very long. I think it contains pretty much everything. Obviously, there's there may be something eventually that pops up that, you know, with the changing climate of like book bans and challenges and everything, we may have to update it at some point. But I I'm I'm still very happy with it. I think it's detailed. It covers all of the bases, but.
It it sounds like it's one of those areas where you you have to have verbiage, otherwise you don't have a policy.
Yeah. So, yeah, I just wanted to put it towards the board, number one, to change that one sentence, to get rid of that one sentence that says you have to be a Southwick resident to borrow from the Library of Things, which on a side note, that change has been extremely great for our Library of Things. It's gotten a lot of usage. People are loving it. It's bringing people in that they don't have to be a resident to use it. So that has worked out very, very well.
I have just a question.
Yes, please.
I'm I'm not sure. This is a long document, and and I might have misread it.
Yes.
It seemed to me that the the ALA. Where is it?
The ALA.
Final page. The Library Bill of Rights.
Yep.
That that doesn't come up until the Bibliotherapy section, and it seemed to me that that it seemed, I was wondering why that's not earlier in the document, like, does the the Library Bill of Rights only apply to the Bibliotherapy section, or does it apply to like, hey, we're following these in case there's there's a challenge?
Yeah, absolutely. Yeah, no, I think that's a fair point, and that's one hundred percent why I wanted everybody to look at this because in the seven pages, there's something I know I've missed. And that that, I think, is a great point in that obviously, it should not just apply to the Bibliotherapy session, but what I would like to do is not make a decision when everybody's looking at me, to just take, take your comment, sit down, look at this, like, let me see where else it makes sense to fit it in here, because I think it's important that it be in other places, or even at the very beginning.
I was going to say, it might be worthwhile because it is such an important piece that you noticed that is do like a preamble at the beginning of this and put that information.
Yeah, certainly. Yeah, so let me, if if what we could do is just approve the change for Southwick residents, knowing that I'm going to come back next month and figure out the best way to put it in here and then re-present it to you all so that you can take a look at it. Because I think it's important that it be mentioned, obviously, in more than more than one place and on the final page, so.
I I have, and and thank you for, and right. Think about it. And just one other question. So I did revisit what you sent to us over the summer, the the ALA workshop on, you know, i- if this happens, and th- this isn't a political consideration. It's just, you know, we need to be prepared and have good, solid answers. And one of the other documents that that webinar brought up was the ALA Library Code of Ethics, which I don't see in this at all, and I don't know if that's if that's something that would be worth including, or if that typically isn't with the Bill of Rights or.
Yeah, no, I think it definitely should be included. Yeah. Yeah, let me, we could even add that on as like another appendix, but also have something as like Jen said in the preamble, mention both of those things as kind of the guiding points towards this policy. Yeah. Yeah, absolutely.
Okay, thanks.
You're going to say what I sent out this summer. I don't remember what I did yesterday. What did I send out this summer? Okay, perfect. Yeah, actually, would it just be easier for right now? All of our staff know that you can take out materials if you're not a Southwick resident, if we just vote on it all at once next month. So that way I don't have to go through, update everything, make copies for all the staff. We can just update everything next month after I have some time to to look at. Then we will set this aside. All right. And new business, again, I did mention the teen survey results when I was talking in the department head meeting, I sent to them. So I don't think we need to cover that again. CPC's project, so where we are at now. I'm sure you guys have heard me talk about this a million times or beyond tired with it. So where we're at now is the project is going to cost more than anticipated. And we're going to need to get some cement work done. So we have one quote for that. And when I was talking with our town administrator, we need to bid it, so I have to get about three, I think the minimum is three different quotes from different contractors for the project. Cindy brought up, I don't know if you wanted to to briefly talk about your idea.
Yeah, so Irene Wolf, who was a volunteer at the library for a number of years, huge supporter of the library, happens to be my brother-in-law's mother. And his his dad was chief of police for many years here in town. So one of the things that I brought up in talking with the family, they would love to do something to honor their parents. So you know, the choices were kind of the Soldier's Home, because that's where Chief spent the end of his life, and she was an avid volunteer there. But if you've driven by the Soldier's Home lately, I think there's a lot going on at Soldier's Home right now. So that, when Lynn mentioned the project that she's working on, I asked if it would be something that we could do fundraisers and do something in honor of the Wolves, knowing that the Wolf family would like to do something for them as well, and they know a lot of people in town. So so it was kind of brought up as an idea. Mike said that it's not without precedent in the town because the Publary's donated for the animal shelter and stuff like that as well. So I don't, I know that Lynn has things already planned out for the project. It's not like we'd be looking to to kind of come in and take over and do anything. It would be, you know, what could we do to fundraise?
We do spring cash.
So so that came up as an idea about doing something as a fundraiser, and then not we there. It's not like borrowing and stealing from the town. It's not, you know, doing every grant under the sun.
Yeah, so so where the project is now is none of the concrete work was asked for in the original CPC application because the building department was going to, the the person who was the head of it, who said he was going to do that for us, he's no longer able to, he's no longer with the town. So there's actually, it's kind of like two very distinct parts of the project. What's funded from the CPC is all the structures, the benches, tables, trash can, all of that is funded. We have the money for that. We just don't have the money for the concrete work. And if we needed that, we would need to go back to the town meeting. I obviously, right now, I'm really short on time with being short-staffed, so we would probably have needed to go through, make a a new, whole new application, go through all of that. And it's just not going to happen in the times, the time scheme to be ready for the May town meeting, because obviously they need things a while beforehand to get it on the warrant. So we would be looking at the fall slash winter town meeting, which is like usually like November or so, I think, November, December, maybe. Actually, they had it in January last year.
Well, it it depends on.
Yeah, it depends on the circumstances. So that would kind of be a holdup on it as well. I did bring this idea to the CPC at their last meeting. They're fine with it because, hey, fundraising is great, you know, it's not something they would need to pay out money for.
So you did say that you got one quote already?
Yes.
Can you give me a swag?
Twenty-five thousand dollars.
Okay.
I did have somebody here on Thursday, and I had another gentleman here on Friday. So I'm hoping to have two more shortly to kind of give us a picture.
Okay, so when I brought this up to my sister and brother-in-law, and they were going to talk to the other members of the family, because there's twin brothers and there's two sisters and all of that. I had mentioned the sum of fifty thousand dollars.
Oh, okay.
So we're.
So you're you're driven big, yeah. At least keep in mind the twenty-five thousand dollar quote I got. The contractor put in like a marble bench as part of that, which is probably something that we didn't look pretty, but, you know, I can only imagine. No, no, it's more of like, it's more of like a looking piece as opposed to, you know.
But if we're able to raise more money, we could maybe do something with landscaping or something like that. So, you know, make.
You also mentioned it at the Suatman FinCon meeting, the annual budget meeting.
Yes, yeah, and yeah, so that that was how I emailed Joe Didi like a day or two after the meeting about, because he said he could recommend a contractor, and they were here within the week with somebody who was very enthusiastic about the project. They had that spray paint out there, painting the yard, measuring it all out. So I'm hoping to have something soon. I did talk to the town administrator because I'm not sure what I'm allowed to do as like my part in this. And so she said, you know, town employees can't really be involved in fundraising. And so she said, you know, you have a friends group, so
Right.
I think you know, you could potentially talk to the friends group to see one, if they're interested. They're meeting, I I don't know if you're able to. They're meeting tomorrow night. I can always bring it up to them.
I can't.
That's fine. Yeah, I can bring it up to them and just at least get the idea planted in their heads.
Okay.
And to see if that's even something that they're willing to.
I mean, I talked to Pat about it. Pat's on the friends, right?
Yep.
So I had talked to her about it as an idea, but, okay.
Yeah, I don't. I don't know if if twenty-five thousand dollars, I have no idea when the other quotes are going to come back. Like, this is not my thing at all.
I'll have to be.
We'll have to see.
Team Wolf.
Yeah.
Get the Wolf pack going.
So when you, when you brought up a figure of fifty thousand dollars, what was their response?
There was not a lot of barking about it. So nobody.
They need to like have somebody come to parties, hang out with them. I am happy to volunteer.
Okay, so we'll, we'll work on it.
Yeah, so. I love the Wolves. I had Irene as a teacher, and I had a Charlie in the box when he delivered milk back in the day. They're very good people. I will definitely donate if you guys do.
Well, we're, we're kind of coming, trying to come up with a good idea for doing a fundraiser and stuff like that, so.
Certainly.
So we can
Yeah.
get all the Friends of the Wolves involved.
So hopefully, maybe by like the end of the month, I would have. So hopefully, maybe by like the end of the month, I would have a number to go with.
Okay.
Um, I would hopefully have all three quotes in, and, um.
Yeah, it's always good to have a goal.
narrow down on a number and, and go from there, um. But I'm, I'm hoping the others would roughly be around the same amount, too.
Right.
Maybe a little less if there's not a marble bench involved, I don't know, but.
Okay. Yeah, cuz I, I just think that would be. A nice thing to do, cuz they were a very big part of this town, so.
Yeah, yeah, so let me, um, let me bring it up to the friends tomorrow, if they're, um, if you're okay with it, I'll pass along like your email address, so. Uh, the president of the friends can reach out if she wants to ask more questions or discuss more. And, and we'll go from there.
Okay.
Um. Master plan, I gotta get better about this, I keep mentioning the things that are in my director's report for the department head meeting, I already discussed the, um. Master Plan Implementation Committee and the Update on Actions. As well as the Summer Reading Day, um, opening day is June twenty-first, and for the summer hours, um. I wanted to, so. Normally, last, normally, we don't have the issue of motocross being on, you know. A day when we're open, but they've moved it earlier, um. The traffic didn't seem to be too bad last year, I'm just thinking of the last Saturday that we're open in June, um. If we'd want to consider starting our summer hours earlier. Because of motocross, or if we don't wanna let motocross dictate how we, how we do things.
The day of motocross, is it the last Saturday in June?
Yes, yes, it's the last Saturday in June, yeah, that's the last thing I heard, um, so our opening day is the twenty-first, and then the. Keep forgetting what this is magnetic, the last Saturday in June is the twenty, twenty-eighth, yeah, so. We could potentially begin our summer hours earlier, we didn't have any problems last year with, um. Our parking lot being used, however, because we had an event that day, I was very, we had one of our staff person's husbands out here kind of. Guarding the parking lot before some reading opening day, cuz we were so afraid that our parking lot was gonna fill up, which I, I've been told has happened in the past. On motocross days, um, for free parking, so, um. Wanted to mention that, I don't know what you would want to do. You know, I can also talk to.
I mean, it shouldn't be, it shouldn't be that.
It, it shouldn't, yeah.
I mean, there's lots of parking. You know, they have the high school kids park the cars and stuff to raise money for the sports teams, so.
Yeah, between the high school and then Raleigh Park.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think they charge close to like ten dollars or something per car, or something like that.
Yeah. Not like the biggie.
Doesn't wanna have to deal with the traffic. I don't see it being a problem to start one week early, the summer hours. I mean, really, I would think that kind of could be up to the staff and what they want, cuz. You know, trying to go in and out, you know, might be harder for them, so.
Yeah, so, so what I could do is I could just talk to our Saturday crew, see what their opinions are, um. If, if we were to be open, I would think it would be extremely dead anyway, um. So I can see what their thoughts are, and then just, just go from there, if we don't have, you know, if they don't wanna deal with traffic or anything like that. The police were actually last year telling people to, you know, keep off the road if you aren't going to motocross. And here we were saying, come to our summer meeting opening day, but we had it booked, we had it booked like a while in advance. So. Yeah, I can, I can talk to the staff, see what they think, and. You know, if, if, if enough people are just, you know, it's gonna be a problem, then. We could potentially begin our.
I think since you're doing the kickoff the week before, that, that following Saturday.
Yep.
People are gonna be taking off, but the following week is July fourth weekend.
Yeah, that's, that's true, and I think. Labor Day is, is Labor Day early again, so I think there's, there's gonna be no. Yeah, so we open the Saturday, so we're not closed any Saturdays in September, so it's not like we'd have an extra long period of.
That kind of brings up another issue, if you're closed on the, the twenty-eighth. And the library has never done this, that I'm aware of. Would the library wanna offer parking here at ten bucks a car, or whatever the going rate is?
My first reaction is no, 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 no. We, if nobody's here and somebody chooses to partake in parking here, then, you know, so be it, it's a public parking lot.
I think you're.
It's. Yet you don't want people parking here for free, cuz then they'll also tailgate here for free.
Oh, that'll be fine, yeah.
And then you're going to get your book bins that are beautiful and new, with beer cans.
No.
And there's a lack of bathrooms down here, and I've heard that's a problem, and people are drinking all afternoon.
Oh, no. My poor book bins.
I have never thrown a beer can into a book bin, just say.
It's, it's probably happened before, yeah. I mean.
I've never been in motocross.
Me neither.
I didn't realize it was, it was a big drinking event.
I don't think.
My neighbor taught me a lot of things, yeah.
Yeah, I don't know if you can drink like on the, in the event. I don't, but then again, what you, what you can and can't do, sometimes the rules are fuzzy for some people, you know.
I just know it's the nationals, so people come from all, yeah, just like a local.
Yeah, I think if the high schoolers are parking cars up at the top of the hill. Maybe it would be nice to ask them if they wanted, if they needed room to also do it in the library parking lot, and then just set up some cones. They can move them if they need to.
Cuz typically.
Create a bigger obstacle in the other.
That's where they're standing, collecting their ten or twenty bucks or whatever.
Yeah, I mean, that's, that's my question too, like, if, if you block it off, and then, you know, so. Or is it best to just leave it be in home for the best?
That this is where the high schoolers stand anyway, is right at the bottom of the hill, so, it's not a. If we offer it to them. And say, listen, this is extra space if you need it, then they'll just keep watch over it, and you don't have to worry about cones being run over, and you don't have to worry about tailgating. And damaged book bins.
Yeah, not the book bins, that's why we have cameras.
Sometimes it's hard to track down.
Oh, yeah, absolutely, yeah, yeah, they're coming from all over, you know, they are.
Are there locks on those book bins, so they can't put anything in, or?
We can lock them, we can lock them, and that would prevent, that would prevent people from putting stuff in there the whole weekend, but I guess if we just let people know, just hang on to your stuff. You know, that's true, we have, they have keys to lock, so we could always lock them. Paul's checking the doors for the night, yeah. So. Yeah, I guess let me, let me do that, let me just pull the staff, um, and then. Just check in with the talent to see if there's any issues with just saying we, number one, closing a weekend early. If that's what the staff wanna do, if people wanna come in and they wanna work. I mean, more, more power to them, you know, we could always shift to our summer schedule a week early. Um, and then, and then, yeah, see if there's any kind of liability issues for, you know, having people park here. Maybe just use it as like a parking place for the kids who are working, or this, you know, the people, the parking peo- the parking people, the valets, whatever you wanna call them. The people who are doing the parking, if they need like, you know, they can park down here or something, but. Yeah, I guess we'll start there and, and see, see what people's opinions are of things, and I can let you know. And then, um, that's all I had, I know our next meeting would be. I'm still in September, April eighth, which is fine, but then our May meeting falls on the thirteenth, which is also the town election. Did we want to try to move to another day?
If we do a week earlier, I can be there.
A week earlier, that would be fine, that would just coincide with the book club, I don't know if your sister would be okay just running it by herself. You know, we, we, and then we just have to, we have to push them out to the, to the chairs over there, no, I don't think they'd mind.
We're getting like ten to twelve.
I do, which is great, yeah.
Great turnout.
Yeah.
Yeah, I want, that's something I wanna talk to you too about, is the book after this.
Yes, yep, yep. Yeah, so we, we could potentially do May sixth. Um.
Is the, is the election, is there anybody here who's gonna have trouble voting? I mean, cuz it takes.
It's always just been kind of like an, like a little rule that we, you know.
Town doesn't want meetings to happen.
Cuz it, it could prevent somebody, you know, they would say, no, I can't vote, cuz I have to go to the Board of Trustees meeting, or, you know what I mean, so. Um, and then.
Don't want, like, I'm running, or. To be decided, but anyways, they don't want me politicking, so.
Yeah, and then the following week is the annual town meeting, um, so May, May sixth would be the best date if that works for everyone. And then, um. And any, I mean, e- even if you, even if your sister can't come to the book club, often, like, the daytime one just usually. And they run themselves.
No, I think, having gone into a couple of months, my sister really loves. So, yeah, so I don't think that she would have a problem.
Okay, so, perfect. Yeah, so then we'll plan on April eighth and May sixth. And then that is, that is all I have, we're, we're on schedule tonight, this is nice.
Okay, do we need a motion to adjourn?
Yeah.
Motion to adjourn, ten minutes seconds.
Um, Nigel, yes.
Ten, yes.
Cindy, yes.
Oh, yes.
Tracy, yes.
Tracy, yes.
Bye, everybody, have a good night.
Bye.